We will now begin the open mic session. The open mic is designed to provide an opportunity for citizens to express their views on matters of concern to the school committee. The sessions are not designed to encourage debate or lengthy exchange of views, but are to have the committee understand numerous points of view. The committee would appreciate speakers keeping their presentation to three minutes in order to accommodate as many people as time permits. The chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers on the same topic to three. All speakers must be at least 18 years of age or enrolled in high school in the Lynn Public Schools District and having discussed their views with a student government representative. The chair reserves the right to rule the speaker out of order if they feel that the speaker's comments are personal in nature. If a speaker's comments are directed at a school committee member or a member of school administration in attendance, that member through the chair may address the individual. The sessions will promptly commence 15 minutes prior to the start of the regular school committee meeting. And we have two folks signed up so far, and the first is Nicholas Fist.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
Sorry, hopefully my phone doesn't die back and forth here. So my son was recently a product of the rule that changes students' grade once it is, once he misses, I believe, his four days of attendance. So he was actually an honor roll student, and he was dropped down to all Ds. Little speech that I prepared here. My whole point of wondering, what is the policy or what is the rule that is made? Statistically, it should raise the stats of students who are doing poorly in school. Such a rule enforced should not have a repercussion or negative side of a student to attend a school regularly and have good grades. Should a rule exist if it might help a problem with students or hurt a student? Let's think about that for a second. We are cutting off the nose, ah, nose of the face, yeah. We are cutting off our nose despite our face. Kids who are doing a good job and are good kids in respect to teachers are receiving bad grades because they have missed some days of school due to students that do not care about grades or care about their schooling, which in turn, I believe, makes children who do care kind of disrespect the school a little bit. Kids that miss a lot of school, that don't care about their grades anyways, that take away from some of the, oh, I'm sorry, honestly, who talks about who the people believe in, I'm sorry, I'm messing up here. It's been a long time since I've talked. Kids that miss a lot of school don't care about their grades anyways, which is something I don't understand. So what's the repercussion of giving them bad grades? If they don't care about their grades in the first place, we're lowering their grades and they're not going to attend school just to get their grades to be higher in the first place. So I think it's a bad rule. For instance, attendance, one of the things that I don't understand is the attendance rate has dropped in the city of Lynn significantly since this rule was actually made. It was 93 to 94% in 2005, 2019. It dropped 88% last year and is already at 90% and dropping this year. A way to put fear into students that need help, I don't think it's the right way to go about it. I think, how about reaching kids where the real problems lie? Some are their parenting. I'm not a politician, so I'm not afraid to say the truth or go into this, but the problem is, I believe, is boredom in schools. I'm a teacher myself at times, and I've attended some schools, and it is actually quite boring in a lot of the classrooms. Teachers aren't teaching correctly, in my opinion. I think we need to stop teaching for tests and teach to inform the students. Teach students about life and history, common sense and not living their heads in a computer. Teach the world that gets kids interested in schooling again and want, if we want tenants to pick up, I think that's something that we need to do. Not lowering kids who actually care about their grades, lowering their grades to get them to attend school, in my opinion, is not a good way to go about this policy. My son, for instance, a little choked up about this. I get kind of upset because my son attends school and does his best to get his best grades every single quarter. And a lot of us, when we work, what's our point of working? We work to what? Get our paycheck, right? I know a lot of you are here to make a difference, and that's great. I appreciate that. But it's our paycheck that we work for at the end of the week. It's our paycheck that we live for and that we get to bring home to make our lives easier. Well, students like my son, he goes to school to get good grades. That's his paycheck. So when he goes to school, he gets good grades, and he comes home and he gets all Ds after working his rear end off for a long time for a kid. It gets him upset. He cries, and I get it, yeah, next quarter, his grades will go back to As and Bs, but he's upset. He just worked really hard to get great grades, and what does he have to claim for it? All Ds?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Fist.
Yeah.
We're just at a time.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. If there's anything you want to sort of wrap up?
Well, I would just, I'd like to see the policy changed. A lot of people are very upset about it, and I just, I'm still choked up about it. I get upset to see it, but for kids to have a policy that hurts them when they're good students is not the way to go about this. I think we need to change this policy immediately, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Magdalena Morales.
Good evening. Basically, I'm come for the same issue. My daughter also had, I had to leave the country for emergency, medical emergency, and now that it cost me and I to get fly at the day that I had to leave. My daughter never misses school. She has As and Bs, and she makes sure before the quarter ended, she finished all her work. Her grades were changed to minus the O. She's struggling with depression from the last two years, and having this, it really doesn't make it easy on every member of my family trying to help her. So I really came here to ask if we can, you know, look at those rules again, because it's not fair for a student who really works hard, not just dealing with depression, you know? Even with that, she has a good grades, As and Bs. So it's a lot for us, and then coming to like changing her grades while she's trying to get the best of her to get into the high school she wants is not helping. So I really hope, you know, at least to look at such children, individual, you know, because I know we all have a different problems, different issues, but I really hope that we all look for, you know, to look into the policies, because it's not fair for our kids who are being working really hard. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak at open mic? Anyone else for open mic? Yeah, please. You say your name and address, yep.
Hi, my name's Renee Fisti. I just want to say that I know that there were students that had gone to Florida, and they were not, it wasn't school related, and those absences were excused. If you have a policy in place that is gonna not excuse absences, that what you guys consider unexcused absences, it has to be for all students. It can't just be for those students. My son was in Florida as well, and it wasn't for cheer or football, and it had nothing to do with school. But if you're gonna have a policy, it has to be for all, and I know that the policy was waived for those 75 students. I also know that they didn't have the grades my son had. It was in the item. It was public, and to change those grades and to excuse the students that went, that's not fair. If you have a policy, you stick to it. You can't change it and waive it for your benefit or for somebody else's. It has to be the same across the board, and it's not fair. So I hope that something's changed and it's fixed, because you cannot change, a policy is a policy. You can't waive it for some and not others. So hopefully you guys waive it for all or those students that went. Their absences aren't excused, and their grades get changed, because it's not fair. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fist.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for open mic? Anyone for open mic? Last call for open mic. We will close the open mic portion of the meeting and call to order the 18th regular meeting of the school committee. Roll call, please. Member Castellanos?
Present.
Member Capola?
Present.
Member Dugan?
Present.
Member Gailey?
Present.
Member Magnolia?
Present.
Member Pena?
Present.
Mayor Nicholson?
Present.
And also would like to welcome back our student representative as well. Yeah, thank you. If everyone could please rise for salute to the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, please remain standing in memory of Mary Louise, retired teacher who passed November 10th, 2023; Maureen Gilroy, November 24th, 2023; Beverly O'Shea, November 28th, 2023; Kathleen Walsh, November 29th, 2023; and Charlene Jollimore, December 7th, 2023. Member Gailey?
I would like to motion to suspend the rules to honor Member Capola and Member Magnolia for their service on the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Close, let's have it. There was no conflicts there in the vote, right? I would like to please invite our state delegation, Senator Brendan Crichton, Representative Pete Capano, to share a few words, if you would, please. Yeah, I think.
We're new to this arena.
Yeah. You probably want to speak into the mic too, if you want to take turns, yeah.
It's a little smaller.
Well, I guess I'll sit down. Well, it's an honor for me to be here with you all, friends, family, guests. It's hard when you leave. It's hard when you, it's hard to get here. It's hard when you leave, but I can't tell you, you know, how appreciative I am and the community is for the service of Tiffany and Donna for all the hard work that you've put in. I know Tiffany, how thoughtful and dedicated you are to this job, and I think you've had a tremendous influence on the schools in Lynn and education. Donna, I mean, we go back, back to all day kindergarten, right? 1990s. Well, I remember when you first came in. If I'm not mistaken, I believe this whole open mic setup, you were a big part of getting this. If people don't know, years ago, there was no open mic, and Donna was a leader in trying to get that. And I know all of the things that you've done, you know, people don't realize behind the scenes, both of you, you know, the work that you do in the community, the friend you've been to labor, to teachers, students, and the work you've done up in the Highlands with Claire Crane, tremendous program. It was a little bit different, but worked tremendously, offering citizenship classes, ESL classes before it was even talked about that much. So we appreciate you both. I have a citation here from the legislature, from the House, and I want to read it. Sometimes we don't read it, but I think in this case, I'd like to do that for both of you. "Be it hereby known to all that, the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Donna and Tiffany for your dedicated service and leadership to the students of Lynn as a member of the Lynn School Committee. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Signed by the Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, Representative Dan Cahill, Representative Jenny Armini, and myself. Future success in all that you do. You're both tremendous role models for the community, and we thank you for your service to the Lynn schools." Thank you.
Thank you.
Tough act to follow, but I'll try not to repeat too much here, but it's an honor to be here to recognize two very important people to the city of Lynn, important to my life, who I've gotten to know over the years. Tiffany, through my time in then Senator McGee's office as a staffer on a wide range of issues, you were a passionate advocate who always put the community first, and you did that as you continue to gear up to run for office, and I know you'll continue to do that. Your public service isn't just a temporary thing, it's a lifelong thing, and we really appreciate all of your work. And to Donna, I've known you since I was in kindergarten at Lincoln Thompson. I knew you as a leader then, even though I probably didn't have a full grasp of what leadership was, but you seemed a very important person back then, and got to know your family really well over the years. We moved to your neighborhood, you know, we've then got to know each other through elected office, and all of your visits to the State House will always have an impact on me as well through other roles that you had, because, again, I think both of you exemplify what it is to be a public servant, and that's to help people, and it's to help people all the time, to always answer that call. So certainly, as Pete said, a role model for all of us in office, but all of us who are community leaders and who care about the city of Lynn and our students, teachers in schools, and parents and families. So I'm not going to read mine, because it's the same as Pete's. The only difference is it's signed by me and the Senate President. So thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you guys want to hold on right there, because we can do some pictures in a moment. I'd like to share a couple of words on Dr. Alvarez to do the same, and we do have some guests, give some guests here as well to present. I want to echo the delegation on behalf of the city in thanking you both for your incredible service. Member Capola, the span of your career and your time here is really impressive, and just as impressive as that is the command of the issues that I think really speaks to what folks aspire to in public education and specifically in school committees, you know, and this idea that education is so important, that we want to have that direct democratic voice. And for you as a parent, as a grandparent, as a foster parent, and as a PTO member, and as an advocate, to be able to bring all those hats and sit at this table and really be true to all those roles has been, you know, I think, a really inspiring example for a lot of us here by your side, and I think your dedication and your just really deep commitment to working families in this community is something that we all admire, and that's been built over a long and escapist career in different roles, and not just here, you know, and your work outside the school district, and, you know, your commitment to some of the most vulnerable members of our community as well, and your service with my brother's table, and just the way that you're able to listen to folks and really understand some of their issues and fight for them and give those issues a full airing that they deserve, I think has just been a great service to this city and to this district. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
And Member Magnolia, the advocacy and the passion and the perspective that you've brought to this work has been incredibly exciting and refreshing and, you know, in a lot of ways innovative, I think, for these, this time now in public education, when there are a lot of deep debates happening, to have someone with as much passion as anyone that I've worked with about the issue here at the table, able to engage deeply in the policy and in the theory, and at whatever level you want to engage in, Dr. Magnolia is right there with a great thought and perspective, and particularly, particularly your concern and really important vocal advocacy for the LGBTQ+ community. The district is better off for that perspective, and we really appreciate all that you've done, all that you continue to do, and all that you bring to this city as a parent, as a leader, as an educator, and we're grateful for your service. Thank you both.
And so, the Lynn Public Schools would like to thank Member Capola for her service to the school committee for over 20 years. I know that's been shared, but Donna was an advocate for students, families, as well as all staff members. Her selflessness and service to others cannot be overstated, and those who've known her have seen her wealth of experience gained through all the years of dedicated service, and that has been invaluable and an asset to the school committee. Beyond her contributions in meetings and policy discussions, her impact on individuals' lives has been immeasurable. Her dedication to excellence and her selfless service will be remembered and cherished for years to come, and you will be missed by all. To Member Magnolia, the Lynn Public Schools would like to thank you for your service on the committee for this past term. You are an experienced educator, which we also deeply appreciated, and you were a voice for all students and families. Your passion to equity within our school system has been the driving force for a lot of changes that have positively impacted students, teachers, and their families. Please know that your contributions will always be remembered, and you will be missed on this committee. I wish you the best of luck moving forward.
Would anyone from, anyone else like to add anything, or Member Capola, Magnolia, any? Yeah, Member Gailey, yep.
Member Capola, I don't know what I'm going to do without you on this committee. I recall way back when, standing in a line doing an open mic. I was still in the teaching field, and you were always there for me to pick up the phone as a teacher and talk to. You looked into the issues, and you haven't, you've been consistent with that for 24 years. You still do that. It's been a pleasure to serve with you. And Member Magnolia, you have brought a different level to this committee, and I appreciate all that you did bring to this committee, and I will miss you, but just, Donna is going to like, I'm sorry.
Don't cry.
I don't want.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it for me.
Great, yeah, please.
I wrote a little bit of something.
Please, please.
I didn't think my family was going to be here. I thought my husband was going to be watching from home, but I guess not. I'm surprised, and that's, there's a couple missing out of this group, but that's okay. But honestly, I've been honored to be able to serve for 24 years, and I thank my family in particular, who sacrificed so that I could do this, and that means a lot to me, and I really appreciate you being here. Actually, the other day, I went over to Swambskett, and Laura was honored for being on the select board there. So all in the same week, Laura, whatever it is. But I served under five mayors. I've been here so long, I served under five mayors, six superintendents, and if I had had my pictures, but I didn't want them anymore, and I brought them down here, and we hung them on the walls, I would have been able to go into some closet and count how many that was, but it's dozens of people that I've served with over time. And also, there's a lot of history that happened in those 24 years, but I was elected to the first committee that ever had five women serving on that school committee, which is like an incredible feat. And also, first female mayor as chair, I got to serve with, first female superintendent, first Hispanic female school committee member, first Hispanic male school committee member, first African-American superintendent, first Hispanic superintendent. And honestly, all the years, I've been blessed with everything that we had. My favorite part are the students themselves and the grad, the highlight was always the graduations. The graduations were incredible to hear where kids were going to college, what they had accomplished, and it's just amazing. I mean, I think, I still think of like David Barrios, I, you know, want to know how far he's going to get. He's an incredible student and everything, but also, some of the stuff, our graduations in particular, even when we had COVID, we made sure that those kids had graduation. That was really, really important. But the diversity of the school system is so important, you know, that's why my kids went to Lynn Public Schools. They're all Rams, though. And I'm proud of Skills USA, the stuff they've accomplished, the ROTC, how proud we are of, you know, all of the trophies that they've always brought us back. Our sports programs were incredible, you know, the boys' and girls' sports programs. Of course, the favorite is always the Thanksgiving game, as long as the Rams win. Turkey tasty good at home. But our band and all the music and theater programs, we couldn't, you know, it's just incredible stuff happened here in the Lynn Public Schools, and enough of it doesn't get out there so people know how great it is. And, you know, I will still be an advocate out there, letting people know that they can trust their kids with the Lynn Public Schools, and especially all the Lynn Public Schools staff for your years of dedication, and especially for the union people. I would have never survived without the help of the custodians telling me where empty classrooms were and all the secret things that went on, so I really appreciate that. And I just wish you all success. I know the new, two new people are coming on, and I know it's going to be a phenomenal committee, and you're going to get a lot done with Dr. Alvarez. So thank you very much.
On behalf of the city of Lynn, it is my honor to quote this official citation. So, Member Capola, congratulations.
Thank you.
And on behalf of the committee, we are honored to present you with this beautiful display here, and we have a And we have a plaque for, in recognition of 24 years of dedication, service, and commitment to Lynn Public Schools, Donna M. Kapola. And then, in recognition of your service to the students of Lynn Public Schools or serving as member of the school committee, Dr. Tiffany Magnolia. Get together, please.
I love student involvement. This is for Tiffany. Could you hand that to Member Magnolia?
Right here, it'd be fine. Just balance yourself out over here, a little bit over.
Must have, oh, they're fighting.
Alf for years, Donna. Years of Alf service.
Okay, look at this way. Big smiles.
Tiffany's.
This is Donna.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Donna's card.
That one.
Oh, wonderful. Okay.
So, we're three pictures going in.
Lovely, thank you.
All right, nice meeting you, sir.
Just remember, I'm an employee of the state of Massachusetts. You could always draw on my expertise.
Okay.
Oh, thanks.
Oh, thank you.
I was trying to read you, because of course you want to hear more than welcome.
No, it's hard enough to hear other people talk about me. I am not going to talk about me too.
Of course, once the campaign was done, that was. Want to talk about the issues and the kids.
It's a pleasure to have you here. Thank you so much.
Thanks for coming by.
Taking Andes. Andes, candies. Oh, they're all gone?
That's the theme of the night. Heard it. Heard that. No luck.
Only ever miss one meeting. 24 years.
That's impressive. That's impressive. That's impressive. Incredible.
Do we need a motion to return to the agenda?
Uh, no.
No, okay, because we just suspended it, okay.
Once everybody's set up here, we can go back in.
No, just jump in.
So, we're at the minutes.
Correct.
All right, next item is the minutes from the 18th regular meeting on November 30th. What's the will of the committee?
Make a motion to move the 18th, make a motion to accept the 18th regular meeting on November 30th, 2023.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Post. Ayes have it. Next item is the elementary school facility master plan, and we are joined by Habib and associates, virtually. We're also joined by Mike Donovan and Laura Stockfish from ISD. We can hear you.
There it is.
There we go.
There it is.
We'll take it.
There it goes. Perfect.
Great, all right. So, now that we have Steve, I want to just say a couple words to lead us into this. I think folks hopefully remember that we talked about this project last year and the funding that we allocated for it, with the idea that we all recognize that the state of our school buildings is one of the most pressing needs in the district, and specifically, those buildings that are not at acceptable conditions, and also the dire need for space. And we're making tremendous. Who can't hear me?
The audience can't hear.
Can't hear me.
Maybe it's Chuck.
The televised.
Oh. The microphone's not picking up the, on the TV, you're saying? Yeah, yeah. Well, maybe Dawn can clarify that before, so we'll do a quick recess.
That's true.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Appreciate it there, response.
Do you know Tyler McDonald? I know of him, yeah, yeah, I remember him playing. Great actor in English.
Who gave us these? These were delicious.
But this is where things turn around for us today. Absolutely, we got Vaughn. Chris, they were great, John. They all did a great job. They just said they could hear us. This is for them. Great, he's going to bring a lot of good.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Oh, yeah, no, that was great, too. That was actually kind of interesting.
What if these melted?
Test, 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 test.
Those jobs like careers.
Would you like me to say something? Can you hear me now?
That should work, I think, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I hear all the school community members talking over there.
And it's also recorded, so we should, you know, okay. All right, everyone ready to move forward? All right, we will end the recess, and just quickly, we talked about this last year, elementary master school plan. The state of the buildings, top priority for the district, and we're really making tremendous progress on that at the middle school level right now with where the pickering is. And I think we all understand that the next step there is going to be to address the needs at the elementary level. And we want to be ready to do that, so we're not waiting to think about what it is we want to do once we are at a point where we can start another project. So, we're doing the planning and thinking now. I think, I want to emphasize that that's a two-track process, because without further reform at the state level around school construction, a lot of this would be difficult to move forward, particularly at the pace that we would like. So, there's going to be some questions when we think about this, about, well, how would we pay for this? Or how would we, you know, how would we get the land that we would need? Where would that be? And I want to be clear that those questions have not been answered yet. And there's two tracks, and they relate to one another. The thinking is that if we have a plan where we show what we would do if we had the money, we're going to be in a better position to then go and ask for the money, because we can tell folks that we're ready to hit the ground running. And then, if we have a plan, once we receive the money, then we don't have to, you know, wait around. And so, there's still a lot of uncertainty about the next steps that happen after this, but that's sort of by design, because we think this is going to be helpful in those conversations. And regardless, even if there is reform at the state level around financing, this is still a very long process. So, none of the changes that we're talking about or thinking about are in any way imminent. It's several years. And we're going to talk tonight about an assessment of the facilities at the elementary level, an aspiration if we, as a community, want to get to the point where we have modern facilities across the district. That will take a long time to get there. And so, we want to make that clear, that none of this is going to be happening anytime soon. At the same time, we want to be really transparent. So, as opposed to coming with a fully baked solution, about this is what we're going to do when, this is where this school is going to go, all that, we're looking to present at a high level what could be an end-state vision for the elementary, and then invite that conversation with the whole community, with various stakeholders, with parents, and teachers, and students, and neighborhoods. And we want to be really transparent with the trade-offs, because there are trade-offs. If we want to have modern facilities at the elementary level, it's in all likelihood, and we want to have that consistently across the district, in all likelihood, it's going to reduce the number of buildings at the elementary level. And that's a really sort of difficult trade-off. And I think the only way we get there is for us and for the folks that are, you know, invested in getting to that end state, to have those difficult conversations and be really transparent with the community about what the trade-offs are, and not do this, you know, to our elementary schools, but do it with the elementary school community. And so, this is really just aiming to be a jumping off point for that conversation. Are there any questions about what we're doing, like what this is, before we jump into the slides? And we've, okay, any questions on that? All right, so I'm going to turn, anything else? All right, I will turn it over to Steve then.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Nicholson. So, would you like me to share my screen and?
Yes, go ahead, you can share.
The presentation, okay. Hopefully, this will work. This computer sometimes is slow. Let's see if I can.
We see, we see the PowerPoint right now.
All right, show. Okay, I hope you can see that?
Yes.
Absolutely. Yes.
All right, well, let's get started. I just want to let you know the process that was undertaken in order to get to, you know, the point where we were able to generate a report on the elementary buildings. The first thing we did was confirm the educational program as well as the enrollment. And I'm going to have slides on each of these. And we had to secure the school department criteria and standards, and also involve the principals, conducting a survey and understanding their concerns. We then did an inventory of the existing educational and support spaces for each and every of the 18 elementary buildings. After inventorying, we were able to determine the existing building capacities, and this is important, so we could understand what's lacking in the buildings and what the ultimate operating capacity would be for each of those. We then went and reviewed the facility condition assessment. Now, that facility condition assessment had been done. Now that facility condition assessment had been done, uh, a year prior to, uh, beginning the, the master planning process for the elementary schools. But there's very good data in that, in that report that allowed us to get some costs so that we could conduct a, a very thorough evaluation. We then generated master plan options. And then reviewed and refined the options in conjunction with the school department and the mayor's office. So that first item, uh, confirming the educational program and the enrollment was conducted. And what you see is here are the standards that the Lynn Public Schools are, uh, would like to meet, would like to be con- uh, be consistent for every school. And there's roughly seven thousand one hundred and nine elementary students in the building. So when we were determining the operating capacity, we were using class sizes that are noted above. And it was also determined that there were a number of spaces that were wanted, that were warranted, and that were appropriate for each and every school building. So one of the steps, one of the early steps was to survey the principals and gather their concerns. And this is one of many questions that were posed to the principals. And this deals with the effectiveness of spaces within each school building. And you'll see number, a number of spaces don't exist. As we look at the next slide, you'll see, just remember those colors. So as we look at this slide, you can see there's a, there's a significant inconsistency with the spaces, their acceptability. Um, many of the schools are, are lacking in, in basic, uh, core spaces such as media center or gymnasium or cafeteria. Particularly in the area of music rooms and art rooms. There are a lot of missing areas. Now in terms of the the facility condition assessment, what we've shown on the far right are renovation costs per the 2020 facility condition assessment. And then the cost projected up to when this report was done in the end of, uh, 21 into 22. And we've highlighted some buildings you can see in green, and those are considered for potential consolidation opportunities. Now the, the master plan options that were developed were a total of five. And options one and four were considered to be, uh, the most viable. And you can see that in option one, there are a number of buildings that would be added and renovated. And it would also include a new elementary building. And it brings the number of active school buildings, um, to thirteen. And option four would would not have additions, but it would have renovations. And I'll just point out, I'm not sure if you can see my, my cursor. But the, the upper number indicates the number of students for each building. And the lower number is the cost. In this case, where there was no addition, it's the cost of renovating or upgrading the facility. And that's tailored across to the right. So all of these options provided for all of the students, all the elementary students in the city. Now, as I mentioned, option one and option four were considered the, um, the most appropriate of the five options. And there's a lot of discussion that needs to occur, a lot of decisions need to be made. But in this case, option one would begin with the construction of a new seven hundred student school building on a site yet to be determined, um, that's unknown as to where. And then from there, students would be relocated to that new building. And that would free up space to allow for additions and renovations. And that would trickle down, um, with time as students were moved from, from occupied buildings to recently renovated and added buildings. So that eventually they would, all of the schools would become, um, would have that equal facility to learn. And option four would begin with a new building, a, a double five hundred student new building on a site yet to be determined. And also a double seven hundred student new building. And of course, that would allow for renovations to occur in the other eleven buildings. And it would really result in a more rapid, um, equalization of the facilities for all of the students in the city. So as, as Mayor Nicholson mentioned, the next steps would include that stakeholder input, those discussions that, conversations that need to, need to occur. And then financing preparation. And then prioritizing the options so that the MSBA can get involved in helping to fund, uh, the work that needs to happen in the elementary schools.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you. Um, before, before we get into questions, I just wanna add that, um, you know, we've, we've been made aware of the idea that there has been sort of thinking and conversations about the reality presented by the age of our buildings along these lines for quite some time. So, you know, essentially like generations of leaders have recognized that something like this has to happen if we're gonna have address the school building issues, um, at the elementary level. And it's difficult. It's difficult, uh, to think about the, the changes that it accompanies. It is also difficult to think about that, how to actually implement this, like all the, uh, everything that needs to fall into place with locations and with financing. Um, but, you know, I think that's what we're here to do, and I, and I think a, a, a lot of folks feel the same way. It, it, it also, I think, only happens if we can try to drive to that consensus that, that we need to do something. Um, and I think our students and our teachers and our families are living every day with the deficiencies. Um, and, and, you know, figuring out how to explain these trade-offs in a way that sort of generates momentum to a path forward. And there's, there's, we, we haven't settled on what that path exactly is. Um, but I think, uh, you know, we, I, I would, I would love to have that conversation with folks. And so input both on, you know, wh- what the, what this plan looks like, but also ways in which we can engage the community to, in order, in order to do that. If you, if you look at the numbers on that slide, um, with the capacity, I think I, I mentioned this before. Even assuming the current, just the current enrollment, we're short an entire elementary school in terms of capacity. An entire school. And then when you look at the year built numbers, it, I, I was just on the, the MSBA board call this week where we fortunately received official approval of the project funding agreement for the, for the pickering. And there were, I don't know, a couple dozen other communities in various stages of projects. And people were talking about the years in which the schools they were replacing, um, were built. It was, it was all in the nineteen fifties. And we're, and you look at this list and see what we're dealing with. Um, and so I really hope that we can work together, not, you know, with the school department and the city and the state, um, to, to forge a way, uh, forward that, that uh, addresses an issue that's really long overdue for our community, so. Yeah, Member Ray Noyah.
I just have a very quick question. What is a double school? I've, I've never heard of this.
Steve, you wanna?
That, that's a, a school that would share some core spaces. Um, it would allow for, uh, just a, a, a greater number of students. It would be two schools, but they would be, um, they would be able to share some common areas. For instance, uh, uh, food preparation could occur in one larger kitchen, but two cafeterias would be provided. Athletic facilities can then be bigger. It's a, it's a way to take into account a larger number of students, but yet keep them each as independent schools.
I know this is a lot to, um, to take in. There's a lot of data here and, and a lot of thinking. Uh, there's a, there's a full sort of document that I think we've shared. Um, and, um, I, I wanted to make sure we, we, we start the conversation. Obviously, there's no sort of specific action that we're asking anyone to take tonight. Um, but if, if folks could, could please continue to review this and reflect on it and share any uh, thoughts and reactions, particularly with respect to that, um, that question of how we, how we bring folks into this conversation in the, in the most, uh, most productive way. Yeah, Member Ray Noyah.
Yeah, I, I think that we have been, um, not particularly great at incorporating PTOs into conversations like this. And I know, um, when the beginning conversations around the pickering middle school were happening, I attempted very much to engage the CISN PTO, um, in participating in those, um, just because of my involvement in the CISN PTO. And there was a kind of reluctance to bridge that gap between fundraising for school activities and then talking about new school buildings. Um, and, and I think I would like to ask both the superintendent, but also the executive leadership to think about how, um, the administration might be able to bring the PTOs into these discussions because some of the best communication networks in schools are not through the principal, they're through the PTOs. And I, I feel like we're missing an opportunity to use a resource that's already in place if we aren't using PTOs to begin some of these conversations around, um, not specifically redistricting for new schools, but what the, the families involved would like to see in their schools. Would they trade amenities for distance? Would they, you know, kind of help come up with prioritizations based on what the families in those areas are? Because in some parts of the city, it's gonna be very different than in other parts of the city. And the PTOs know that best. I look at what happened with the Brickett Schools PTOs and how they have mobilized engagement there. Um, and, and you won't find another PTO more organized to specifically address community needs than those. And so if we're excluding those folks or we're not, um, starting with them, then we're just missing an opportunity.
Thank you, thank you.
It's, you know, fine to just present this and put it in front of us, but, um, you know, if anybody listens to this, it's not gonna, um, give them any understanding that, um, the intent is to close schools, some schools. They don't know if it's their elementary school. And, um, you know, build larger schools that are gonna be a distance, possibly, possibly a distance. But, um, one thing that a lot of, um, people do is buy homes in particular neighborhoods because they wanna be part of a neighborhood school. And I don't know if that's, um, in every communion, but it's definitely in Lynn where neighborhood schools are, are really important. So, um, I think at some point you're gonna need to say, or, you know, as Tiffany mentioned, approach those PTOs, PTAs, whatever it is in a school. And, um, get them on the page to understanding that, you know, their school is the one we're talking about. So they need to come, not be at the end of the process when we're telling them that your school isn't gonna exist any longer. So those particular schools should be hearing that. Not, because what was just presented here doesn't seem all that bad or on, all that interesting or alarming to some people who are gonna lose their schools.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I appreciate that, Member Capola. And we certainly don't wanna alarm people and, and absolutely, that's the, the thinking here is that this is, this is a first step, and then the next step is to start to have those, those conversations and, and absolutely, that's the, that's the case. Yeah, Member Castellanos.
Just a, just some clarification around the development of the finance and prep. So will we be primarily working through a MSBA framework? Is that where we, the goal would be to, to, that would be our primary source?
Yeah, I would, I would think so. I mean, the, the, um, the current system, uh, you know, directs districts through the MSBA because of the, the reimbursement. And, and, you know, we're a community that's eligible for up to eighty percent reimbursement. Uh, there, there, there are communities, and it's, like, it's possible to build outside the process. And then obviously you're not, you know, you don't get the, the reimbursement. Um, but that, that would be what we expect. I think part of the, the, the interaction of this with the, that advocacy is around, um, the, the need, in, in my opinion, for, for, and I, and I think others as well, here that, the, for some reform at that level so that, uh, we would be able to move through more projects more efficiently.
So, so, so when you meet with MSBA, when you, um, with other ma- city mayors, I could imagine, uh, the conversations coming up on like trying to figure out like just feasible solutions for the long term. I could imagine the, the, the cost of construction is going up. A lot of projects across the state have been shot down because people just kept, simply can't afford those pivots. Uh, we saw in the Pickering, um, Building School Committee project, that project had had so many different, um, challenges. Um, if the, the reform that, there's, there's several bills and there's a lot of work being done, the proactive measures you're, that were taken will allow us to have, um, an opportunity to be ahead or, and ready to embrace the, the process that we might have to get into. Just like when we had to enter the MSBA. So the pivots will have the reports. Will we be able to pull the reports that we, like, we're putting a lot of effort? I know they've worked really hard on this, the troubleshooting on this, the, the labor, the time that went into this. I could imagine, uh, a lot, lots of work that, um, got put into it. Um, i- is this the, this would be the trajectory that we're going?
It's, I think it's the, I think this master plan presents that, that, that end state of where we hope to be. It doesn't, it doesn't have the specific trajectory of, of, of which happens where, which is why we, we're not getting into talking about specific schools. Cause it, for, for any given school, if, whatever school you're starting with is, you know, maybe a few years out, but the, sort of the school at the tail end of that cycle is, is like a very long time out. Um, and so, um, the, the idea is that we start this spring having these conversations with, with the PTOs. Um, and, you know, with the, with teachers and with, you know, open to, to thoughts about how to best engage the, the community. And then at, we start to try to come to a consensus about what that trajectory would look like while at the same time continuing that advocacy, um, with, with, at Beacon Hill, um, so that by the time, you know, we have that consensus, or as close as we can get to that consensus, uh, the money will then be in place for it to, for us to start executing. the money will then be in place for it, for us to start executing. Yeah. Member Gailey.
As I, as I look at this, I see the schools are the smaller schools that will be close knit schools. I totally agree with Member Magnolia and Member Capola that we should get out and ahead of it. We have a long enough time to be able to discuss with the, the PTO. But it seems like we've talked to the principals, but I, I don't see any input from teachers. And I think that's valuable also because in our smaller schools, a lot of our students do better because smaller and they have, I don't know how to say it, they seem to do better. But I'm looking at this and I'm looking at a lot of very close knit groupings. So to me, we really, really have to get out ahead of this. This is out here. We need to talk to parents. We need to talk to teachers and we need to get their input. And we need to do it now because as soon as that money is ready, and I want the public to know that the monies are not here. We're still working on Pickering and know how long it took us to get Pickering. So, but this is coming in. This is coming in the pike at some point and we need to deal with this. And we need to start now and be proactive so that when it does happen, I know that's what you're saying, but I also know that I didn't hear teacher or parent involvement on this. So I would like to see that on the next report is parent and teacher involvement on it because they have input also.
Yeah, no, absolutely. That's, that's exactly the case. And, you know, I think we need, we need to have the assessment to know, to, you know, to have the original data to present, but, and it gives people things to react to, to have a more productive conversation. But that's exactly the thinking is that we do this sort of stakeholder engagement, teachers and parents and, and, and other, other stakeholders to get their input. Because there, there's not, there's some, there's some tough trade offs here. There's some really tough trade offs. And I think for us to be successful, rather than trying to, to, you know, decide how to make those trade offs and then, you know, try to power through it, which I think probably does not have a great odds of success, is to try to be transparent about what the trade offs are and then help get the feedback so that we get as close to what we can as a sort of community decision around how to accept the trade offs in a way that, that honors everyone's goal to have, you know, great educational facilities for, for our students. So, yeah. Member, you should want to have something else?
Yeah, I want to just, and continuing with your thought there, then like if we build a building, then those schools that are closed, we could then possibly build smaller buildings or other schools or whatever if we needed to, because our city is growing. Or is that throwing a wrench into the plan?
No, I, I think the, and Steve, can you talk a little bit about how you, you did the enrollment sort of calculations and projections?
Yeah, when we, we take inventory, when we took inventory of all of the educational spaces and the support spaces in each building. And in some areas where spaces that would normally be an educational space was lacking, we then to create the equity, we took classrooms offline and devoted those, those spaces to the, the missing educational spaces. So consequently, some schools that had a certain current enrollment, once we took spaces away to provide the missing areas, the enrollment dropped or the capacity dropped. And we did that for each and every building. I could go back to, I think that chart is here. Let me see. It's not going backwards. You know, I did have that in another slide to show.
Yeah, I think, I think.
If you were to just, I don't have the, the full slides. It's in the full report. Each and every building is tally the number of educational spaces and the support spaces that are needed and that are appropriate. And in some cases, if those support spaces were missing, classrooms had to be taken in order to create those support spaces. Consequently, the enrollment or the effective operating capacity was lowered in order to, to create those added spaces.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. And just to add on that, I think that's a good reminder too, that in the full report, it goes school by school. So, you know, folks should feel free to review that and have feedback on sort of, you know, mixing and matching the spaces to get to a place where, you know, the schools have what we're looking for them to have. That's, that's helpful. And then, Member Gailey, to your question about the, the use of the land for, for any given, I think it, we don't, because, because we're, we're not at the point where it's sort of picking sites about where new things are going to go. I don't think we have ideas or plans for what the disposition of the old sites. It's possible that as, in, in order to acquire new sites, you're disposing of old sites or, or, you know, mixing and matching or whatever it is. I mean, I think that's, that would come sort of once we get into the project about how, what's going to happen with those sites.
Yeah, because COVID is a huge amount of space. If you knock that down, there's a huge space for a possible new school.
Exactly.
In the same location as COVID was.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll stop.
Any other questions? Yeah, Member Panha.
First of all, thank, thank you for the presentation, Steve and Mr. Mayor. This is a, it's quite interesting. And when you take a look at this and see where we're at, like wow. And seeing, you know, and seeing the timeframe of some of these buildings is like, yeah, we need to get the ball rolling. And seeing this put together really starts to keep the conversation because we, how can we have stakeholder input if we don't know what, we don't have something to talk about? So this clearly gets the ball rolling and, and it puts us in a position where we're, we're ahead of the game, you know? And like you say, we, we need to have, you know, something, you know, where can we start this conversation? Well, we, we have an assessment of where we're at and looking at some of these buildings, like whoa, some of these buildings are over 200 years old and our, our students deserve a little better. And I, I totally get it, you know, there, it's going to be some hard trade offs. There's, there's schools that are, you know, that are based on, you know, neighborhoods and, but we got to think about the equity and equality for everyone, you know? And what's best for all our students, you know? And there's going to be some hard decisions to be made. You know, I guess the next step is getting some, some input from our stakeholders, teachers, just to echo what Dr. Magnolia said, like the PT, getting them involved is really, really key, you know? But, you know, when you take a look, deep dive and see where we're, and after having this done, it's like you, you can see where, where we're pretty hurt, you know, we're hurt. We're not, you know, you got schools that are, you know, built 1874. I think that was right, 1874, one of the schools?
Yeah, got it.
Wow, you know? And then you just mentioned that some, most of the schools are 1950, that replaced the schools from 1950. It's like, yeah, we want to be ahead of the game. And this, this makes sense, you know? I really appreciate this because we can't start a conversation until we know where we're at. And this, this is where we're at. So I'll be interested to, looking forward to see what the stakeholder input is like and see what's the feeling for, for, because you have, you have some strong neighborhood, you know, schools and it's been interesting. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Panha. Thank you. Yeah, Member Castellanos.
I forgot to mention the, the question three response, some of the, you know, unacceptables I see in the, in the color charts, like when you look at art, real music, like does not exist. I don't know, I was thinking about just the partnerships or figuring out ways to be mobile and creative with it to try to really address the, the unacceptables and to see how we can, you know, when I think about art, music and some of the media center features that we don't have, like how we bring it, how can we enhance those students' experiences? So I think they're, it, it is pretty concerning, you know, to see it. It's a very, honestly, this is a very powerful visual. So I think it really demonstrates some serious needs, but I think the unacceptables, I don't know, they really hit me. And I think it's important now, hopefully get creative to figure out how to utilize and support space needs and as Member Gailey mentioned, to get the stakeholders involved with, you know, staff, everyone, the community, see how each jurisdiction can provide supports to make those spaces more vibrant and enhance our students' experiences.
Thank you, Member Castellanos. Yeah, Member Magnolia.
Yeah, just a, a quick observation based on what Member Castellano said. I, I happen to have a kid who went to a school that didn't have a cafeteria, didn't have a gym, didn't have a lot of these things. So she spent her entire day in one room. And I think those of us who have working lives know what it would be like for us if we never left that room. And, and I think that, you know, we, we talked about protective sweeps policies here. We've talked about disciplinary issues. We've talked about a lot of things, but I, I think it's really important to connect the dots with the kinds of learning environments that our kids start out in and how enriched they are and how engaged that allows our kids to be in school prior to the point where they get to issues with disciplinary things, et cetera. And, and I think, you know, I, I know I'm leaving the committee after this meeting, but I would just say that with all due sense of urgency to hit the ground running with as much renovation as possible, because these enriching spaces do make a difference, especially for those kids who were young enough during COVID that, you know, not leaving four walls was a particularly traumatic experience. So I just, I, I just want to urge as much quickness as is possible in this extremely laborious process.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate that. Obviously, to be continued. Next item is a curriculum adoptions update.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Steve.
And thank you to Mike Donovan and Laura Stockfish from ISD, who were integral in this whole process. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Laura.
I was just there and I was like. Look at that. Some of them even have music rooms or art rooms. We need that.
Just hanging out with the dog.
Look. Like, man, I was just sad, like I just, yeah. Yeah. We don't see that. We get all these presentations and I have no music room, no art room. Yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And it's a bit of a pleasure to be here at COVID. Last meeting, so I appreciate your contribution. My name is Molly Cohen and I'm the interim director for curriculum instruction.
Not on, Molly.
Oh.
Slid right in. I'm glad to see someone else is sweating more than I am.
Thank you.
I'm Molly Cohen and I'm the interim executive director of curriculum and instruction. And I'm here to describe phase one of two upcoming curriculum adoptions. Before we begin, I'd just like to thank the assistant director of ELA for secondary, Allison Mosho, and her middle school team of teachers and school administrators and in partnership with her colleagues from MLE and SEL departments. And I'd also like to thank the assistant director of social studies, K to 12, Kristin Tobacco, and her future team of teachers and administrators. It's been a tremendous honor and privilege to work with the talented and passionate district and school leaders that we have here in Lynn. And I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season. My holiday gift to you, school member, school committee members and viewers is the brevity of this presentation. I'm reading a script to make sure that I stay to my five minute limit. So let's see how I do. Unless we have technical difficulties. I promise you that I practiced this. It was five minutes. I know, tick tock.
You got the paper.
You have, you want to just follow?
Yeah, that's fine. We've got the pack.
Okay, thank you. All right, let me get my, my copy out. Don't know why it's not working. It seems to be the theme this evening.
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
Magic touch.
Okay. So luckily for you, Deb, I'm going to even speed it up. Maybe we can do this in four minutes. The goal for this presentation is to review the process of curriculum adoption and just update you in regards to where we are for our ELA middle school six to eight adoption and our social studies three to five. Next, thank you. Given our recent adoptions, you are very familiar with the phases of the DESI adoption process. This evening, I will only be describing where we are in phase one, learn and prepare. Quickly, this slide is a visual representation of the roller coaster ride change management is and demonstrates how important leadership, vision, stakeholder buy-in, clear communication, and transport, and transparency are for a successful adoption implementation. The up and down depiction of this process is also a reminder that any new adoption uniformly seems a dip in the student data in year one, given the complex nature of change management. These several management principles demonstrate how important it is to ensure all elements operate functionally at all times to guarantee success. As you can see in this visual, all of these key elements need to be in place for successful implementation. So we're going to begin with ELA. Next slide, thank you. So phase one includes these five action steps, which are the buckets of work that the team is doing. This is organic and timely and it changes as, as the process unfolds. If you move to the next one, I'll talk in detail. Okay, for, for example, in the teaming process for planning, the curriculum council, the addition of a new SEL member, Virginia Lee, recently impacted the vision and the drivers in the student centered way in which I will speak about in the fourth bullet. So the first step is to pull together the school council and determine what the scope of work is. That started in October. They've had monthly meetings in Zoom. Then when you move to launching the curriculum council, this is where the work really begins in regards to visioning out what they, what they want the lens to be for the work. So I'd like to thank all of the work that these members have done so far. It's very diligent work in regards to how many resources there are out there. Right now, they're drafting an instructional vision that determines the, the drivers for what resources they're going to choose and then present to you. The other, they use ed reports, curate MCAS and iReady scores in order to determine what our needs are. So an example of the evolving and dynamic nature of the process is that in the drivers that you see in that fourth bullet down, critical thinking, student centered, culturally responsive, celebrating diversity and scaffolds, data driven materials, those were the original drivers and they, many of those still remain in the vision. But this is the time when the cell person's lens shifted some of the drivers that weren't first identified in the first vision, because it's a revision of the, of the vision as they go. So thanks to that contribution, there has been a few more drivers that have been added, persistence, resilience, and relationship. and relationship, the centering of relationship in the work that we do with students. So the team now has narrowed the vendors down to five, which are all approved by Curate and Ed Reports, and they will be meeting in person in January. Thank you. So the draft of the anticipated timeline follows the recommendation of the DESI phases. This timeline ensures ample preparation for the development of professional development and implementation planning for the start of the school year 24-25. If you see here in that third launch phase, that we will have done the investigate and select, present to the school committee, and then invest in the resources to be able to start in the fall. The PD will preempt the actual opening of school. So now we're going to shift to Social Studies, which is really much quicker. So if you will recall, on June 22, Assistant Director Kristin Tobacco presented a thoughtful and appropriate plan. At the time, though, school committee was considering one grade, three, four, and five over several years. In November, Assistant Director Tobacco surveyed the principals and the program specialists to seek input on reevaluating that timeline as a result of receiving many requests from teachers, program specialists, and principals for resources and ideas for teaching social studies in those grades. That result overwhelmingly showed support for the multi-grade rollout. So now what we're looking at is grades three, four, and five at the same time. In this way, they really cite conducting the professional development across the three grade levels, equity and access for all three grade levels, and the desire to provide high-quality social studies instruction for all students without undue delay. Yep. So this is where we are right now. We expect to be able to come back to you in April and present the recommendation for the adoption for ELA Middle School and Social Studies 3-5.
Did you time it, Kevin? With that flip and everything.
I have, poor Deb has stuck up here. So that's it. It's a very simple, we're really in a very standard process for the adoption, Phase One. But if you have any questions, yeah, sure.
Member Agnoli.
Yeah, so I just want to make sure for the ELA part, as you explained for the Social Studies, the feedback is what allowed you to say that you're going to do the multi-year rollout. That self-assessment is something that I have been pushing for, for the curricular rollout. So not just the curriculum itself, but the rollout. It would be great if, when you presented in April, you could present either a timeline or a method for self-assessment on the curricular rollout. So how are you soliciting feedback from teachers, not just program specialists and principals about their comfort with the materials, their PD around materials, you know, the timeliness of these things? And then, at what points will you be adjusting based on that feedback? I think that giving that information and that timeline some thought prior to the rollout, and then disseminating that to the teachers who are going to be using this, is actually really good at reassuring them that their feedback, when it is solicited, is going to matter.
Thank you. I've noted that.
Yeah, thanks.
Member Dugan.
Thank you, Molly. A great presentation. Kept your time limit, so I appreciate it. Quick question. When we pilot, so Phase Two, according to DESI, is investigate and select, when Lynn pilots, especially at the middle school, would that be piloted across all three middle schools? Maybe just at Marshall, maybe just at Breed, all three?
No, no. It's all the schools.
Okay, and that would replace whatever curriculum they're doing? Yeah.
Right. It's a unit usually. You know, it's a piece. But absolutely. And then, to Dr. Magnolia's point, all of the perspectives are then garnered.
Great. Thank you.
My question was about the piloting.
Thank you so much for the presentation and to everyone involved in this work. We appreciate it.
Sure. It was my understanding to give a report card update, but I'm not sure if that's still something you would like me to do.
Yeah, it's Roman 8, letter B, following our field trip request, if you wouldn't mind waiting right there while we check in with the superintendent on her recommendation for the LVTI Skills USA Students to CSI Leadership Conference.
And the recommendation is to approve the field trip study tour for CSI Leadership Institute hosted by AFT in New York City.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. And now the K-2 report.
Next time I'll have the agenda with you. Also, to stay timely, rather than just speaking off the cuff, I have prepared a statement about the report cards update, because, you know, report cards are sort of complicated, especially when you're transitioning to standard space. So I'm just going to read to you my statement about where we are. As you are aware, the revision of the K-2 report cards began a few years ago alongside the dual-language rollout. With the adoption of the interdisciplinary units, Curriculum and Instruction and the Multilingual Education Department led the process of teaming and identifying priority standards to report student learning to families. Now, we find ourselves in year one of the My View K-2 implementation and year two of the illustrative math, high-quality instructional material implementation, which prompts the revision of the report cards. We took this opportunity to expand the standards represented on the report cards. What you see in front of you is a revised draft of report card where the social justice standards are the lens through which we do the work, but not the standards we ask teachers to evaluate. Given the complicated nature of collaborative feedback loops, we have had to make some last-minute revisions to the first drafts that principals and school committee members received. The first revision is the removal of the expectations to, quote, "follow school procedures," unquote, because it is not a standard. The second revision was a decision to revert to the original social studies standards that were previously identified, because currently, our teachers do not have social studies curriculum resources that support all the standards we had identified for social studies. Hence, our proposal for social studies curriculum adoption is timely. Principals have been wonderfully supportive in this endeavor. To support the teachers, they are offering PLC time for teachers to grade with the new standard report cards. The assistant director of Math Elementary, Ms. Sukowski, will be opening Zoom office hours and creating a reference document to align the standard letters and numbers to the language of the standards on the report card. To support families, I have drafted a letter that we will send out to families tomorrow pending your decision to approve these revisions. In closing, I'd like to share that this process is complicated and timely. It requires a level of collaboration that we'd like to expand to include more stakeholder voices. We're really excited about the continued future work with our teachers and families in developing transparent communication about student learning. I have the letter for families in the event that you'd like to see it.
Member Gailey.
I did get to see this, and I did have people calling me on this report card. And I spoke with Deputy Powers. So I was happy to hear, and I don't know how helpful it is yet, because I haven't talked with the teachers that I talked to previously, but having Mrs. Sukowski was awesome. They were very happy. Having time in school was another asset. I didn't see your letter to the families, but I was glad that you put in that support because it was very difficult for this person, or persons, that came forward to talk with me. And as soon as I talked to Deputy Powers and I got the information about Sukowski, the person calmed down a little bit. She felt a little bit more confident, because it's very subjective. And she was like confused about the rating scale. She was confused about how you have a rating scale, and then you have another rating scale for developmental. So Erin will, I mean, Mrs. Sukowski will answer all those questions, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Member Dugan.
Again, thank you. Being someone that's been on a report card committee, this is a lot of work, so I do appreciate it. Couple quick questions. So if we approve this tonight, this is effective immediately. So these would be the report cards that families get. Okay. Just wanted to make sure we got some clarity on that. And then, letters to families, I'm sorry you said would go home. Again, should we approve tonight? Will go home tomorrow? Okay. Thank you.
And I'm happy to, it's not a long letter. I'm happy to read it for any family members who are listening tonight, if you want to review it or...
Email it to us.
Yeah. I think Superintendent was pointing out, we may not want to read it.
Oh, correct. It hasn't been approved. Yep. I'll just tell you, it explains to some logistics too. So for example, there is a delay in the report cards, because as you know, there's multiple translating that has to happen. It has to align with the data center, which, who I would like to thank. The data center, the compliance officer, and translation have been wonderful through this process, especially since we have to keep sending different revisions back to them. So the work involved, it continues to double when you have the feedback and you're revising. So everybody has been very supportive. But it will push out the report card distribution. It will not change the trimester period. So we're still following the trimester period. So students have begun their second trimester, but they won't get their report cards for the first trimester until what we're estimating is January 19.
Member Gailey.
So I would like to ask Sheila O'Neill how this teaches, like if I'm hearing from a few people, how, what's the feedback that you're getting from the teachers?
Yeah, the only thing that was brought up at the meeting yesterday was that the projected date, January 19.
We want to have, we can't just...
Okay.
Yeah. And you were asked, so nothing, yeah, but... Did you have any other questions?
So have you heard anything from teachers' feedback on this?
You? Yeah. I have not, personally, I have not received any feedback. Erin has been working with the team and with the principals throughout the whole process.
All right.
Any other questions? Member Agnoli.
I'd just like to move the adoption of the K-2 report card.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Pena?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
Next item is a vote to cancel the 20th meeting on December 28.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Next item is any votes taken in the Personnel Subcommittee from December 12.
There was a vote of three to move a job posting up for chief. Forget the title.
Chief of Staff.
She is.
Correct.
And I understand that that's being withdrawn.
That is correct.
Okay.
And I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Subcommittee for the deliberation on Tuesday and all of the feedback and input. And for all of those listening, and I've had this conversation with LTU as well, it's not, we're not withdrawing because there isn't a need for the functions of that job responsibility. There certainly, they do exist. But since that evening, there was sort of an announcement and a change that I'd like to give Deputy Powers an opportunity to make herself. And so we will be just realigning, right, some responsibilities among the deputies, which makes sense. So Deputy Powers. Sure. I'm getting emotional already. It's with excitement, as well as great sadness, that I'm going to announce tonight my retirement after 35 years in the Lynn Public Schools. I'm not retiring till July, but I wanted to announce because I think it gives Dr. Alvarez an opportunity to rethink some of the leadership positions and plan moving forward. You know, I've had the privilege of being an educator in Lynn Public Schools for 35 years, and Lynn Public Schools has been my home my entire life, because I was a student at Tracy and Breed and graduated from Lynn Classical. And so I feel Lynn Public Schools has been my family for my entire life. You know, I want to, I just want to make a comment on, I've been privileged to work with so many incredible educators and leaders. And while I'm sad, I'm very excited to be also moving on to the next journey and be able to spend so much more time with my grandchildren. So I want to thank the committee and let you know that it's just been a pleasure to be a leader here and to be an educator in this district. So with Deputy Powers' announcement, it gave us an opportunity as a team to rethink how we would realign some of those essential functions of the Chief of Staff description to then align that with a possible deputy taking over, since that person would not have the functions of Curriculum and Instruction that would shift over to a chief academic officer. So that made more sense to us in terms of how we could, you know, increase our operational effectiveness. So...
Member Agnoli.
I thank you for the clarification about why the position is being withdrawn. I did want to say about that position that when we hired you as our new superintendent, Dr. Alvarez, you outlined a vision for the Lynn Public Schools. And I want to urge my fellow committee members to put their trust in your vision. It's not always comfortable to sort of think about some changes that might look different than the way the Lynn Public Schools have been run in the past. But a leader's job is to steward a system, and it's not always clear to everyone how all the parts of the system work together. And so whenever that job comes up, I just would urge my fellow school committee members that if they put their trust in you to steward this system, that you're not going to bring a job pell mell to us. And I wish you the best of luck as you reform that vision.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Magnolia. Member Gailey.
I also would like to thank you for thinking of staff and all the staffing concerns that we've received, and you coming forward and announcing that so we can reorganize and get what Dr. Alvarez needs to forward that, her goals and her vision. And the teachers will be happier, too. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to share that you've had an opportunity to preview that organizational chart that has not previously existed within our school system. So we will go live with that on our website coming, this coming Monday. And it will continue to change, right? One, there are changes. All of that will be updated for all of our community members, family to see. I was able to copy sections of it by department or by position with who's under it. That will be given to Deb Johnson or Terry to send out to you so that you have it in a smaller form. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will certainly have an opportunity, I'm sure, to officially recognize the deputy superintendent in the coming months. But just would echo everyone's gratitude for your service. So thank you. Thank you. Any votes in the Policy Subcommittee?
Yes, we had a couple. So first, we pushed forward Section B, and in Section So first, we pushed forward Section B, and in Section B, we were, oh, I'm sorry, let me back up. First, we pushed forward Section A. A does become before B in the alphabet, sorry about that. And we were hoping to rescind Policy AD, and that was our educational philosophy, and that has since been laid out in the strategic plan, so to rescind it from the policy, as it would be redundant at this point.
That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
All right, ABB, here we go. So the next one would be that we would rescind our, this gets complicated, BBBA slash BBBB, and replace it with MASCS, BBBA slash BBBB. And again, that is just really about our oath of office and different responsibilities that we have, you know, to take that oath and live up to that oath, essentially. So the MASCS version's a little more updated and has a little more current language, so...
Second.
I think that included BBBA as well.
BBBA, yep.
BCB, BBBA, and BBBB.
BBBB, correct, yes, yes. Lot of Bs there.
Excellent, yeah, that sounds right to me. Roll call, please.
Member Castellanos?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Peña?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
And that was the extent of it.
Thank you, Member Dugan. Communications and Information.
So our enrollment report from December 1 indicates that we are still strong at 89% minority student population, and we've had very little fluctuation in our enrollment other than increasing. While other states and districts around the country are experiencing student loss, we are holding steady at 16,955 students, which is really way over capacity, what our school buildings can hold, as we saw earlier in the architect's presentation. And in my superintendent's report for December, I just did not, you do not have a document, school committee members? You're not missing it. I just want to wish you all, as well as our students, teachers, parents, all of our community members, a joyous holiday season, and wishing everyone to get rest and enjoy their families, and come back to an exciting 2024. So thank you all for this evening's meeting.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Happy holidays, everyone.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas, everyone.